Oh, here we go again, everybody. Hey, welcome to the Wisconsin Live Desk here from the Fox 6 Studios. I'm Ben Handelman. I will be your tour guide. I will be your maestro. I will be hitting all the buttons in here. If this is your first time on the Wisconsin Live Desk, oh, welcome because we have another hour ahead that's always exciting and always unpredictable. Here's the rules of the Wisconsin Live Desk. If this is your first time on this adventure, everything you are about to see in the next hour will be live. That is our only rule. We are not unlike a newscast where sometimes you tune in and you'll see a lot of edited things. Oh, no. Everything you see right here on the Live Desk is just that. It's many times from Wisconsin. It is live, and it comes from this desk where I've got all the buttons. And then this is my hitting button motion here. So here's what we're watching at this hour. I've got a beautiful shot that was there from one of our photojournalists out at one of the beautiful parks. But he just went down. That's what happens on the Live Desk. Oh, the weekend is here, and we've got beautiful weather in Milwaukee. We're watching this live picture high above, looking into our fair city. We've got all eyes right now on what is happening in this Los Angeles County courtroom. The Menendez Brothers, they are getting a hearing, and their freedom could be determined today as you're seeing this staff member out there as all cameras are parked and pointed at the courthouse. We've got a live picture there in LA as we're watching what's happening. But I got to start out in Washington DC because we got a press briefing. These things always can be fiery with the press secretary. So why don't we listen in? We're going to start at the White House and see what we're talking about. Lots of different topics have already been talked about, but here we go. Live picture, press briefing, Washington DC here on the Wisconsin Live Desk.
And unique assets to each country, advantages, rather. And if when that 90-day mark hits, the president will make that decision then.
I want to move on a different subject. So a bird earlier attacked my colleague Peter Doocy during a live shot at the White House.
I'm wondering if that's why Peter is absent from the seat. Is he doing OK?
He's recovering.
Has anyone checked on him?
He's recovering. Is anyone looking into that incident?
I could check in with GSA to see if anybody here is looking into it. I also understand there was a mouse in the briefing room earlier today, so I'm hoping somebody checked in on that as I'm hoping it doesn't run up here and distract me. That would be a good way for all of you to distract me, actually, have a mouse come run up here. So I'll get an answer for you on that and out of respect for our good friend Peter. Jeff?
Why is American consumer confidence so low?
Look, I think there's a great optimism in this economy, great optimism for the American people, a lot of reason for people to feel optimistic. The president is, as I just said, trying to renegotiate the global trade agenda that has ripped off the American people for far too long. As he said, this is going to be a period of transition. He wants consumers to trust in him, and they should trust in him. Look at what he did in his first term. And I just want to reiterate all of the reasons to be confident since you asked, Jeff. For those watching at home, yesterday, the CPI report, inflation declined massively. Consumer prices are dropping for the first time in years. Energy prices are down. In fact, oil prices are down 20% since this president took office. Wholesale prices fell again. There have been trillions of dollars in investments into this country. Every day, the president is signing executive orders to cut regulation, especially when it comes to Environmental Protection Agency, our energy industry. That's going to unleash the economic boom in this country that we saw in the president's first term. So trust in President Trump. He knows what he's doing. This is a proven economic formula.
What is he asking of Americans at this time? He talked about transition costs, transition problems. Is he asking something specific for Americans to do?
No, I think the president is asking for Americans, trust in Trump, as I just said, trust in his economic agenda and formula. It's a proven formula that works. And by the way, clearly, the American people do, in fact, trust him because they did just overwhelmingly elect him to this office. Jennifer?
Is he going, I'm asking about the physical, is he undergoing any general anesthesia? And can you outline any of the other tests that he's doing today?
He is not. He is undergoing quite a few tests, imaging. Again, it's a long, or it's a yearly physical, so there's quite a lot that goes into it to make sure the president is accomplishing all of his goals, and we will provide a readout of that as soon as we can.
And will you be committed to releasing all of the results, as many of the results as possible?
Of course, yes. The president's physician will do that. I spoke with him this morning.
Carol, will you guys also consider releasing the president's fitness plan? He actually looks healthier than ever before, healthier than he did eight years ago, and I'm sure everybody in this room could agree. Is he working out with Bobby Kennedy? And is he eating less McDonald's?
I can confirm the president is in very good shape, as you see, on a near-daily basis here. And in that vein, thank God, it's Friday. It's been a very long and busy week here at the White House. We will see you all on Monday, and we will release the results of that report as soon as we can. Have a great weekend, everybody. Thank you.
That was Carolyn Levitt. The press secretary, meeting with the press on this Friday, talking about birds attacking reporters out on the White House lawn, and a mouse apparently got into this room. But they're talking about serious things. One thing that the president is doing today, he's undergoing that yearly physical that presidents always do, and then it's usually public record, although always controversial because oftentimes the press is wondering if the things that are in that report that is released to the media and then to the world is accurate. And it's always debated upon as you hear one reporter say, has he cut down on his McDonald's? As President Trump, we know, loves to eat that McDonald's. All right, here's some other news we're following today. The Menendez Brothers, they are, the big hearing out in Los Angeles right now as obviously Eric and Lyle Menendez, they are in prison, have been there since that 1989 murder of Kitty and Jose Menendez, their parents. They were 21, 18 at the time. This started at noon. Judge Michael Jessick is presiding. Apologies for that as audio is coming in from one of our feeds here. As, yeah, they're going to have, this is, big court hearings underway as we speak right now as the Menendez Brothers, they are trying to get out of prison. Their lawyers have filed appeals, and the LA County District Attorney wants to keep them in prison and is arguing that thinks that they should, you know, stay in there. There was a recommendation from the district attorney at the time, 50 years to life, meaning they would be eligible for parole immediately. So this is what the judge is deciding whether or not because of some of the new facts that have come forward in this case, especially the sexual abuse allegations, that many people believe that they have served enough time and they should be eligible for parole. There are a lot of other people who think this was a grisly crime that was covered up by these brothers, and they deserve a life sentence, and they are where they should be. So two sides to this story. One judge, and you see media has really gathered all around the courthouse. Hey, we got a new picture that just popped up. Let's take out the heartland, tell you what's going on here. This is pretty interesting. So this is the Heartland Lakeside School District, and we always say oftentimes on election night, you know, your vote really matters. And a lot of times, people are like, yeah, yeah, whatever. OK, elections are decided by thousands of votes, tens of thousands of votes usually. Not this election. Let's bring you inside. This is a recount underway for a school board race. This was decided by 10 votes, OK? Top three vote-getters out there in the Heartland School District, they get to be on the school board. Well, the guy who came in fourth place, came in fourth place by just shy of 10 votes to become in that third and final spot. So there were more than 12,000 votes in this school district, in this school board race, and that was all decided by just 10 votes. So what you're seeing in this room, really interesting process. They are now counting by hand every single vote because the guy who came in fourth, a guy named John Poulis, I think I'm pronouncing that right, Poulous, maybe, he wants a recount. So, and by law, since it's so close, he gets to have this recount. So this is what's happening out in Heartland. Jason Calvi is in this room. Really interesting, you know, Heartland, deep-red Waukesha County, especially out in Heartland, there was these three guys, they were three dads as they were campaigning, saying they were conservative dads, vote for us. Well, the guy who came in fourth is one of them who did not get elected, and actually some of the more liberal-leaning candidates are in the top three. So there's this kind of Democrat versus Republican interesting story happening out there. But you can see, these are some of the observers who are literally sitting over some of the people who are recounting, and every single vote counts here. I don't know if there's audio on this. Let's pull up.
If these are largely in order, then I suggest you certainly
There we go. Give me a number. Number four?
OK, so there has been some tension in this room with some of the ballots.
We'll find them in here compared to markdown.
As all these ballots can be challenged, like if you see something that doesn't look right, you can actually challenge that. And they did, they started this process yesterday, and there have been a few challenges, and then the election workers have to decide whether or not they're going to count the ballot or not. So let's just listen in because some of what, you can actually feel the tension from the people on the other side. The people that are counting the ballots, you can see on the left, the people that are observing are on the right.
My knowledge.
Just kidding.
So what we want to do is pull up these two tally sheets for these and rip them off, and they'll have to start over with the tally.
I think if we do this, if you take the one you have, look at the top one, right? Find the number, and then I'll find.
Before you start, I just want to make note, there was another non-HLSD ballot found in a pile for the village of Heartland, so I'm just removing it. This stack already had 51, so we're not adding an additional ballot to this stack. We're just simply removing the non-HLSD, and then that brings them to
All right, so I have to call.
Thank you.
I'm just going to finish this second, then I'll be there.
Franklin, John. I'm sure this was fun because it didn't look as much for the circle. So we have Matt Franklin, or Matt Franklin's John for this one.
So then what they were doing over there was just taking those ballots, make a pile. So they're out of your pile to review. There you go, and yours will stay in order for the
19?
Sorry. Sorry, 19?
Can you feel the tension in the room? Who said elections were boring? Who said election night was even over? We all voted, you know, on election night thinking, OK, the results are in. Not out there in Heartland, again, the guy who came in fourth wants a recount because he's lost by just 10 votes. Now, I don't see the candidate in the room, but you're seeing, these are observers that are literally hovered over the table of some of these election workers, watching the election process. And I mean, there's been tension the last couple of days over certain things. Jason Calvi is in the room. We're going to hear from him in a second. But yeah, it's tough to be an election worker, too, as you've got these guys kind of breathing down your neck, but rightfully so. Everyone wants the process to be right. Everyone wants the process also to be open. You see that camera way back in the room there, right there? That is just equipment. You can actually watch this on YouTube. They had a 24/7 feed going just to show that this is an open process and that everybody can watch this. Yeah, that's one of the, they actually have two cameras in the room. So, and we've got a camera in the room, too. Gabby Nasby, one of our photojournalists, she is handling our camera duties. So here's what we'll do. I'm going to take a quick break here on the Wisconsin Live Desk. We'll see if we can get Jason Calvi to see what all this tension is about, but stay with us. Very interesting scene out in Heartland as, again, who said counting is boring? We'll be back right here on the Wisconsin Live Desk.
This is the Wisconsin Live Desk.
Hey, everybody. Ben Handelman from the Wisconsin Live Desk. Another exciting hour here from the Fox 6 Studios. This is your first time here at the Wisconsin Live Desk. Here's how things work. We have one rule around here. Everything must be live. We will not edit anything. You will get to see news be made unfold before your eyes, and you will get the context that you deserve. You'll kind of see how things unfold throughout a day on a newscast. I just want to show you some of the things we're watching out there, the stock market. What do you know? Another roller coaster day. This thing has been up and down all day long off this new tariff news. China once again saying they're retaliating to President Trump's news that he's raising tariffs to 140%. Well, China has responded with their own huge tariff. So the trade wars escalated a little bit, but we've seen Wall Street not really knowing what to do with some of this news. We've seen historic losses and historic gains depending on the day. Today, the Dow ending in the green as of right now because look how kind of the day's gone. It's kind of been all over the map, but so far up over 600 points. That is good news, but you breathe a little bit, and suddenly that can be, who knows what will happen? Actually, in the next, oh, 15 minutes or so, too, we are expecting to hear from Wisconsin farmers on how the tariff war is affecting them. We're going to have a live report from Janesville. We're going to a soybean farmer as that is actually a huge export. And so we're going to see how Wisconsin farmers are reacting to the latest with the trade war. Donald Trump giving a 90-day reprieve on many of the tariffs he announced earlier this week that really sent the stock market into a tizzy. But so far, good day on the Dow, on the stock market. We're watching those numbers. Big court hearing out in Los Angeles that we're watching at this hour. The Menendez Brothers, their freedom or lack thereof will depend possibly on what happens in this courtroom today. A judge is deciding whether or not that Eric Lyle Menendez, who have killed their parents in 1989, could be eligible for parole immediately or quite the opposite. Maybe he will decide that the, not, not to go that route and that they would stay in behind bars. We got a live picture. This is just done from Washington DC. I want to bring my producer Delaney in. We were at the White House, press briefing. This is a different room, isn't it, Delaney?
Hey, Ben, I think this is a different room. I'll check on what this might be.
Yeah, so we're going to try and figure that out. And we're also watching what is happening out in Heartland, Wisconsin. And so let's see if I can get this live picture up. This is right here. Something very interesting is happening. We always say your vote counts, and it really, we mean it this time because here's what's happening out there in Heartland. There is a 10-vote difference between the guy who came in fourth place and the candidate who came in third place on a school board race. And the guy who came in fourth base, fourth place has asked for a recount, and that is now underway. This is day two of it out there in Heartland, and Jason Calvi is in the room, as is our Gabby Nasby, one of our reporters out there. And there has been some tension at times from what is happening in this room just because there's all these observers. You can see them on the left, the people who are standing up. Those are observers of the candidates, or you can, actually, anyone can go and be an observer. You see they got the name tag there? On the right are election officials who are doing the painstaking process. There were more than 12,000 votes in this school board race, and they didn't finish yesterday. They've been back at it for the last three hours, and they're doing a hand recount to see if they come up with the same number. So we've been kind of watching this shot, and I don't know, Gabby, can you hear me? You got a thumbs up if you can hear me? Oh, she can hear me. See, this is great. Do you have Jason Calvi with you? I don't know if we can get Jason on a microphone, maybe out in the hallway. So, oh, there he is. Oh, I can't. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me, Ben?
Oh, I know you're whispering because you're in a tiny little room out there in Heartland.
The room is very tiny, so I'm talking in my golf announcer voice. Can you, can you hear it through the, through the microphone here?
This is perfect because the Masters is on right now. So this, this is your second weekend in April kind of voice.
That's right.
Jason, this is a fascinating process that's underway in Heartland because we always say this, I mean, as we try and say this every single election night, your vote counts. It really matters. And out there in Heartland, more than 12,000 people voted in this school board race, and it was decided possibly by the narrowest of margins. What is happening in the room that you're in?
Yeah, so right now, if Gabby wants to flip around here, I'm going to continue to talk in a little bit of a whisper here, but there are those 12, more than 12,000 ballots that are being recounted. So the, there were three open seats, three seats that were on this, the ballot here in this school district, and 12,000, more than 12,000 people voted. People got to vote for three candidates, the top three vote-getters get a seat on the school board. And 10 votes separated third place from fourth place. That means 10 votes separated from getting on that, that third-place position gets you on the board. So those 10 votes separate third and fourth place really separates the winners from the loser here. If you do the math, which I did type it in the calculator, it's 0.08% difference in vote. The candidate does get to, the candidate has to request the recount. There's no automatic recounts in Wisconsin. So there's not, some states where you have an automatic recount, there's no automatic recounts in Wisconsin. But the candidate who loses, which is within a point, can request a recount. Now, state law is, here says the state pays for the recount if the vote margin is under 0.25%. And here, we're at 0.08, so we're underneath that, which means the state, the school district is going to be paying way under here. I mean, you can't even fact, I mean, you can't even fathom how small the percentage is, 10, 10 votes separating. So that means that the school district will, according to state statute, should be paying for this recount requested by the fourth-place finisher on election night. So this is a publicly funded recount here today. It's not normal like that. So when you saw in 2020, when you had President, President Donald Trump request a recount of Dane and Milwaukee Counties, he had to pay for that because he was not within that threshold to get it paid for by the state. But again, the fourth-place candidate requested this recount, and that's what you're seeing here. And guess what? I was just talking to one of the clerks here from one of the towns out here.
Yeah.
And she says that they're going to, this is going to be all day.
All day again, huh?
It's the second day here of the recount.
OK.
Yeah, and they're
I'm a news nerd, Jason.
Most of the ballots
Just like you, OK? And I, all the people that are watching the Wisconsin Live Desk right now, we're all news nerds at this. So I was watching this yesterday. At times, this is a very tense room because you see that, OK, those guys that are standing up, those are presumably, Jason, those are the guys that are representing some of the candidates, right?
Audio? OK. OK, Ben, sorry, I was getting a little tidbit here. We are on a live stream also for the school district. They're broadcasting this recount, so it's really a sensitive microphone. So that live feed you were watching last night is probably picking up my conversation right now, so I just want to move a little bit out of the way.
How about you just tell everyone watching on the YouTube channel to switch over to either the Fox 6 YouTube channel or the Wisconsin Live Desk, and they can, they can get some context. No, so Jason, I have seen a couple ballots challenged. Like, these guys have said, hey, I want to challenge these ballots. So do we know what the current, what's happened with those and what the current numbers are showing? Have any numbers switched?
Well, they're, so the town of Dellafield, they, they're, they had their numbers up on a screen here, and it was interesting because there were some changes. There were a few changes. There were some extra votes and some decreases of votes for just that town of Dellafield. So that's just one piece of the pie for Dellafield, the town of Dellafield. I think they had something like 2,000, 2,700 votes for that town. So it's one part of the pie, but there were some changes here. The, the fourth-place finisher at the school district level, he did add about three votes.
Ooh.
And the, the third, yeah, the third-place finisher, that's John Paulus, he picked up a few votes in the town of Dellafield, three, three votes to be precise. And then Morgan Hennings, who's the third-place finisher, who's right now was set to win a seat on the school board. She did lose a couple votes in, in the town of Dellafield from 409. She originally was at 412, and now she's down to 409. So in this process, you know, numbers can change a few here and there, and that's what we're seeing with these votes. But again, we still have, so the town of Dellafield, Merton's already finished up. Town of Dellafield is nearly complete, talking to the clerk there. But the one that we're really waiting for is Heartland. They're the largest chunk of these votes. When we're talking about 12,000 votes total for the school district, about 10,000 of those votes are the town of Heartland. That is the work that's going to be continuing all day Friday. And are we going to finish by 6 o'clock? I don't know. I don't know. It's possible this may have to continue.
Wait, so timeout. I thought this was a 10-vote difference. I'm pretty bad at math, but if you add three to the fourth-place candidate and you take away two from the third-place candidate, this would make this a five-vote difference at the current time, wouldn't it, Jason?
That would be the case. Thank you for doing all that back-of-the-napkin math for me here.
That kindergarten math that I just did?
We should get the chalkboard out, but that, so yeah, it's getting closer and closer. But again, that, that village of Heartland is the largest chunk of votes, 10,000 votes, and they're still in the process. As Gabby, our photojournalist, shows you, there are stacks and stacks of ballots that still haven't been counted. So what's going on here? On election night, these votes go through the electric, you know, voting tabulators, the high-speed voting tabulators, you know, count these ballots. When this recount was requested, we're seeing now the election workers manually, there's two, two at each station here, and they're manually counting each of those ballots twice here, one, once for one person, the next person counts as well, and they get, that's, that's now the number. So the manual recount, that is the actual number that'll be a part of the election results once they're certified.
So interesting. OK, so I, you know, we've seen recounts before, but the fact they're doing it by hand, Jason, that doesn't always happen. Like in Milwaukee County, when they had a big recount, they just popped them back in the machines and, you know, they've got a lot more votes to count. But this, I mean, OK, so, I mean, I can feel the tension in the room coming from the guys who are standing, but here we go. So this is by hand. I mean, they're, they're literally, each and every single ballot is being touched by these election workers and being tallied up.
Yeah, exactly. And that is, that is what they're doing, and that's why it's going to take, that's why it's, now we're in the second day here of this recount, talking about 12,000 ballots. And they're all being counted twice by the election workers, and then they get a new tally, and then, so yeah, it's, it's a long process when you do it by, by hand like they're doing here.
OK, last thing I'm going to ask you about, Jason, well, then we'll just keep watching this. There is politics at play here, and as someone who's our Fox 6 political reporter, this is deep-red Waukesha County, and the guy who came in fourth place, he ran with a couple of other dads as we're the conservative dad party. I mean, they didn't make up a party, but that was what their signs were basically saying. We're three dads who are conservatives. Vote us in. And a couple of more left-leaning, I don't know if that's the right way to say it. This is a nonpartisan race, but people who were not coming out and saying, I'm the conservative candidate in the race, ended up ahead of him. So there is some, you know, I'm not sure if Democrat versus Republicans, what's going on here, but certainly that's how some of the candidates were framing it.
Yeah, and, and definitely the parties are framing it that way. So you, you see in Waukesha County, there's, uh, the Waukesha County Republican Party, they have an organization called, or initiative of the party called WhisRed. So they'll, they'll kind of endorse school board and town village board membership, they'll kind of endorse candidates. So you get the, you get the list, and it kind of gives you the suggestions from the Republican Party of Waukesha County, the WhisRed Initiative. So, um, they, they had, um, you know, endorsed, uh, three people in this race, including John Paulus, who is that fourth place person who requested this recount, who right now, you know, did not win the seat on the school board, but after this recount, we'll see if he can get on that school board. And then the other two people that won a seat on the school board so far, uh, the first, first place finisher was conservative-backed, he's part of that WhisRed initiative backed by the party here. Uh, the second place finisher was liberal-backed, there's a group called Blue Sky Waukesha, and they're definitely left-leaning. So if you look at their candidate questions, when they ask people, candidates, and they only, they only kind of back, uh, progressive candidates as well. So, um, they've backed, uh, the third place finisher, Morgan Hennings. So, uh, big Blue Sky Waukesha, definitely left-leaning, and backing, um, the third place finisher. So that, that battle for, for the third, the third and final seat here on the school board is coming down to that battle between liberal-backed and conservative-backed, and that's why these vote counts in this room are so important for people here. This is also that school district that had a little bit of, uh, I don't know if you've talked about it earlier, but they had that, uh, that big kind of scandal earlier this year when a 72-year-old, uh, bus driver was charged with driving a school bus while intoxicated. Remember that case, Ben?
Yes, of course.
That was in this school district. So, um, that's, that's on the minds of, of parents and voters as well as they're going to vote, as they went to vote back in April.
So our 10-vote lead, according to Jason, because one village or city is done, is down to five as things are tightening up. Jason, appreciate you always joining, joining the Wisconsin Live Desk. Appreciate it. We'll keep your shot up for the next half hour here as we're watching this really interesting scene take place. All right, just, we're going to take a quick break here. Just want to go around, show you all the different things we're, we're watching at this hour, the stock market.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ending up here in the green, which is good news for Wall Street today. So we're watching what's happening here. Big reason that the, the stock market's been all over the place is because of tariffs. And you know what? We got a live picture out in Janesville. Look who's here. Ashley Sears is, uh, on the Wisconsin Live Desk. This is a farm field. Ashley was just talking with a farmer a second ago. We're going to take a quick break, and then we'll talk to Ashley. We're also, what's happening there, there's an NTSB press conference, it looks like. This has just popped up, although it looks like our shot's frozen here. But we had that helicopter crash in the Hudson in New York City. So, uh, we're expecting there, as you can see, as it pops back in, they're getting ready for a press conference, and we might dip into that. Who knows where the next half hour will take us on the Wisconsin Live Desk? Stay with us. We'll see what happens next.
This is the Wisconsin Live Desk.
What up, news nerds? Ben Handelman here from the Fox 6 studios. Another exciting hour here to end your week on the Wisconsin Live Desk. If this is your first rodeo with us, welcome. Hold on tight because we never know where this show is going to take us. Uh, I've actually been told that we don't even call this a show because it's really just me hitting buttons, seeing what's coming in live. So anything that's live, that's happening from Wisconsin and beyond, it comes into this room, I play the mic strobe here, and we see what's happening out there. At this hour, we've got our eyes on this. This is, uh, NTSB press conference. We had that awful tragedy in New York City where the helicopter that just fell from the sky right into the Hudson River. And everybody is wondering, how do the rotors just come off of a helicopter like that? This is one of the groups that is investigating, the NTSB. And so you can see that's Pix New York, so these are New York stations. Uh, Delaney, are you with me here? I'm not even sure if we know where the, exactly this press conference is coming at it, but I'm going to presume with Pix there that this is a New York City live shot. Is that correct, Delaney?
This is actually from New Jersey. It'll be taking place in the New Jersey City Hall.
Okay, New Jersey, uh, obviously Hoboken would be on the other side of the river there. Um, so all in the New York City area. But yeah, okay, live picture from New Jersey. Another thing we're watching at this hour is the stock market. And some good news, the Dow up 1.5 points. It was up a little higher a second ago, but almost 600 points in the green after what has been a turbulent, and I mean turbulent, week for your 401K. If you want to just maybe avoid taking any heart medication, don't even look at your 401K, you might want to let this thing settle. Why has the stock market been so crazy? Because of this escalating trade war with China and the United States. Uh, President Trump has paused tariffs to all the other countries around the world, giving them 90 days to negotiate. That sent the stock market surging, but just a day later, that was yesterday, it went back down in the red, and today it's back up in the green, despite news that China has just bumped up their tariff. And one of the big questions, how do Wisconsin farmers feel about this? Because there's actually a surprising amount of Wisconsin product that goes out to, uh, out of our country. And to talk about that, we're bringing in my wife, Ashley Sears, who's sitting in a farm field in Janesville, Ash. And I know you've been talking to farmers today. What are they saying?
Here to Janesville and spoke with Doug Rebout. He is a soybean farmer here, and he's also the president of the Wisconsin Soybean Association. He was kind of explaining to us all about how these tariffs are impacting farmers here. And before I get to that, I want you to see this. This is a cornfield right now, or it was last year. Uh, this year, in about a week or so, they're going to be putting down some seed, and this will be a soybean field. So we thought it'd be fitting to, to stand here. But, um, I want to bring Doug in here for a moment.
Let's bring Doug in.
Doug, just...
Come on down, Doug.
This is Doug. Uh, he said, come on down. So tell us the impact, um, you know, the tariffs are having on farmers and kind of what you're feeling right now.
Well, the tariffs, you know, anytime tariffs are mentioned, um, we're, we're being impacted in agriculture because when other countries go and retaliate, it's, agriculture is usually the first thing. And so every time, you know, they're mentioned, our price drops and what we're getting paid for our product. And yet, we're paying more for our inputs, our fertilizer and all that stuff.
And this is important because, uh, the US, the biggest export to China is soybeans, correct?
Yes. China imports, or we export more soybeans to China than the rest of the world, or rest of the countries combined around the world.
And you said that's about 67 million bushels annually?
Well, 67 million bushels of Wisconsin-grown soybeans gets exported around the world, not just to China, but around the world. So two-thirds of what we grow here in Wisconsin does get exported all over.
And, and Doug was telling us earlier, you know, besides thinking about what's the weather going to be, is there going to be a good harvest this year? Now you're thinking, what are these tariffs going to do?
Yeah, as, as we sit there, you know, as we're planting the seed in the ground, we're also planning on looking at prices of, you know, what they're going to be next fall. So we're already selling this crop even before we put it in the ground. And so we're looking at these prices, and, you know, they're fluctuating so much day to day. And we have our set price, we know what it's costing to put the seed in the ground and grow it. And we hoping we get a certain, you know, set of bushels per acre when we harvest it. So we know, okay, we need to make this much money just to cover our costs, and we're right at that break even, if not a little below of what our prices are right now.
And this impact goes beyond farmers. I mean, we're going to feel it as well as, you know, people here in the United States.
Yeah, because like I said, here in Wisconsin, you know, and all around the United States as farmers, we sit here and when we sell our products, we go out and we don't keep that money squirreled away in the bank account, we're back out spending it. And every dollar that we spend gets spent seven times over the economy locally. So if we're not spending the money, that means all of our local stores and vendors and all that are being impacted.
And what are you hearing from your fellow farmers right now?
They just don't know what to, what's going on, you know, uncertainty, every day that they wake up, it's something different. And we just want certainty, whether it's, you know, our markets, our farm bill, whatever. We just want some clarity as to what's going on.
All right, thank you. I don't know if you had any questions for him, Ben, but Doug has been so nice to us today in welcoming us on the farm here. He said this has been in his family since the 1960s, right?
That's impressive.
1963. Yeah, and he's a sixth-generation farmer. So beyond just having this farm here, um, there were some other farmers in the past.
Yeah, forget the beer and cheese. I never thought of Wisconsin as you add your soybeans in there as well. Maybe you can ask Doug, I don't know what the soybeans, I mean, are these used in food products that we use every day that maybe we don't even realize that's what those beans are used for?
Yeah, Ben is asking, what, what is soybean products? What are they used in? Especially like when it's exported, what, what are they using the soybeans for?
Every, every part of the country is, or every part of the world is different. They're getting used for feed for animals, they're getting used for feed for human consumption. Uh, it's getting crushed for fuels and cooking oils. And, I mean, there are so many uses for soybeans that depending on where they go. But cooking oil and crushing them for the oil out of them to be used for cooking oil, for biodiesels, that's a big market, and we're actually trying to grow that more here in the United States now, too.
Uh, and Doug, uh, gave me some of these. I want to show you this.
Ooh, what is that?
My photographer here, zoom in. That will be what's planted in the ground here. These are soybean seeds.
Are you going to bring those home and put those in our backyard?
I don't know how well they do in our backyard, but, uh, sure, why not?
Is there anything else?
If Doug lets me.
It's a rare opportunity to get to talk to you in the middle of a, a farm field. Did you learn any other farm facts today that you were surprised at, that, uh, you're such a city slicker?
You know, I'm from Indiana, uh, and live in Wisconsin, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not really a farm girl. So every time I'm on a farm, I'm like, whoa, a cow! We got to meet some cows today. They mooed for us. We saw some tractors going around here. But, you know, it's kind of the quiet season on the farm here. I said it's really peaceful. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's so calm out here. I think we should open up a newsroom out, out in the farm field here, and maybe everyone would be at ease a little better.
Yeah, calm for you because you don't have to worry about the tariffs and how that might affect you. Ashley, thanks for joining the Wisconsin Live Desk. Appreciate it. Thanks for, Doug, for spending some time with us. And yeah, see what else.
Please, thank you.
It seems, sounds like you're getting the full experience out there in Janesville. So, uh, appreciate it. Uh, we'll check in with your live reports coming up on Fox 6 News at 4, 5, and 6.
All right, thanks, Ben.
And here's what the Dow's doing today. You could see hovering around 600 points in the green, so that's good news. Uh, as, yeah, we're watching kind of the effects on the stock market today. We're also at this hour, this is what we're waiting for here, uh, next. We're expecting an NTSB press conference, live picture from New Jersey here on the Wisconsin Live Desk. Uh, we had that awful, terrible helicopter crash, and we're expecting maybe some new information coming from the National Transportation Safety Board today. So they've got all the cameras there, they're lined up, people are moving in. Uh, and honestly, I'm not, I'm expecting to see even more microphones show up to this presser. I'm not sure what this time, what, what time this press conference is going to start. But here, well, here's what we'll do. We'll take a quick break here on the Wisconsin Live Desk. When we come back, we'll see what else is happening here on your Friday. Stay with us. Ben Handelman from the Wisconsin Live Desk. I hope you're having a great Friday as we're kicking off the weekend here. It's been another exciting hour. If it's your first time here, let's just go over the ground rules again of how this works. Everything you are about to see is coming into this room, this powerful room that we built here in the Fox 6 studios, live. Nothing is edited, and honestly, sometimes we don't know which camera shots are going to pop up because we have a, a network of cameras from all across Wisconsin, all across the Midwest, and honestly, all across the nation and the world. Got a new picture that has just popped up, a tragedy in Florida, Boca Raton, Florida. Uh, I'm going to bring Delaney, our producer, and she's got some new information from our Fox partners down there in Florida. And Delaney, we're looking at the aftermath of a plane crash, correct?
Yeah, this is the aftermath of a plane crash in Boca Raton. It happened earlier this morning. Officials say that three people onboard the plane died, um, and investigators think the plane crashed due to some mechanical issues.
Okay, and I'm looking at the scene here, and you can see, so Boca Raton, that is a seaside community in southeastern Florida, not too far from Fort Lauderdale, kind of in between Fort Lauderdale and Miami. And it looks like we're on some train tracks here, uh, Delaney. Do we know the area that the plane ended up in?
I'm looking for that right now, but once I know, I'll let you know.
Yeah, you can see this, obviously, it's happened somewhere inland on train tracks there in Boca Raton. But just, uh, look how terrible this scene is, as we're just seeing, uh, all the wreckage and debris from a small plane crash, killing everyone onboard there in Florida. And you can understand why there were no survivors, as this was a violent wreck. Again, Delaney just telling us this appeared to be from some mechanical issues that was happening out there. I do want to show you also what's happening in New York City here, uh, live picture now. This is the area where that helicopter... This is the area where that helicopter crashed in the Hudson River, and there is still New York Police Department on scene there in New York City and Lower Manhattan, as we're awaiting word as to what killed this family of five and a pilot, what caused the helicopter to break apart. This was a tourist helicopter that left yesterday. It was two executives on the plane from Spain and their children, and they were there as a vacation. These tourist helicopters, very common in New York City. They often leave from Manhattan, they'll spin around the city really quickly and drop you back down. A tragedy unfolded right over the Hudson River, as you're seeing another law enforcement boat in the area there, as this helicopter. There's been terrible, terrible videos of this breaking apart midair and plummeting into the river. They've already moved the helicopter, they did that last night, and the helicopter's been taken out of the water. And today, we're waiting to hear from officials. Live picture now, this is New Jersey. This is a live picture from the NTSB, as we're waiting to hear if they've learned anything so far about what happened. I'm not sure if those tourist helicopters have a black box that you would see on an airplane. These are, the company that's been doing this, we heard from the owner of the helicopter tourist company, saying they've been in business for over 30 years. There have been a few issues of maintenance concerns before, but nothing like what we saw yesterday, like the rotors just coming off of the helicopter and falling apart midair, sending all six of those people falling down into the Hudson River. Another picture we're watching at this hour, what's happening in Los Angeles. You can see some of the people that have gathered outside the county courthouse downtown LA, big hearing on the Menendez brothers, as the judge could be deciding the fate of what's going to happen, as a resentencing hearing is happening. Some of the district attorney there is suggesting that they may have served enough time, and is asking that the brothers who killed their parents in 1989, Eric and Lyle Menendez, be eligible for parole right away due to some of the new information that has come forward, specifically allegations of sexual abuse that the brothers went through when they were teenagers and very young in that house that really captured the nation back in the 80s. So here we go, the Menendez brothers, a big court hearing happening right now. So we're also watching what's happening out in Heartland. Not sure if we have that shot for you anymore, but there's a big recount underway, happening right now in Heartland with a school board. Jason Calvi's been out there, the Lakeside, Heartland area school district. There's a school board that's been decided by just 10 votes, but as Jason is out there, the fourth place candidate, who need to come in the top three, lost by 10 votes to get that third spot, apparently is gaining traction and has cut the lead to just five votes now. So John Pullos is the candidate's name. We're watching that, and obviously, we're watching our weather. We've got a beautiful weekend on tap here in the Milwaukee area, as beautiful shots from around our city here. We're expecting highs in the 50s finally, as we've just kind of had a rough week, haven't we, in southeast Wisconsin? As we've had snow, we've had rain, there was grapple. Apparently won't be issues this weekend. There might be some rain on Sunday, maybe some spotty showers, nothing to ruin the day. So hey, stay with us. We're still waiting for this press conference from the NTSB, and we'll wrap things up on this exciting hour, but who knows what will happen next? Ben Handelman from the Wisconsin Live Desk. I want to bring you back out to Heartland here, as we've been watching what's happening with this school board race. Really interesting. Can you see that? 10-vote difference, really the difference between the fourth place candidate and the third place candidate. We do not often take school board races live, because there's so many of them, but this is a nail-biter out in Heartland. So we are watching what is happening in this room. So Gabby Nasby's doing a great job, too, because this is a tiny little room, and our photojournalist has been really showing us the process here. Okay, you see those nice women there on the screen? Every single vote in this school board race is being recounted by hand. You can see them checking, tallying, checking, tallying. And this is, I believe, the last municipality that needs to finish this recount. This is day two of the recount. And as Jason Calvi has told us, the fourth place contender, guy named John Pullos, lost after election night by 10 votes. He asked for a recount, which you can do if it's really, really narrow in Wisconsin, and this one, obviously 10 votes disqualifies. And he is getting closer as the votes come in. He has gained five-vote difference as they continue to count. So his hope is that now when Heartland is done counting, which is what these women are doing here, there will be even more votes swinging his way. Obviously, those election machines are very, very accurate, but not always 100%. Some would say sometimes the human error is at play as well, that the humans don't always recount it correctly when you've got thousands and thousands of votes. And that's why you've got kind of a check and balance system with two different women who are checking that. So we're following this. Jason's gonna be in there. He says they expect to count these votes throughout the entire day, and is not sure if they will meet that 6:00 PM deadline. They're going as quick as they can, but they do not want to mess anything up. And there are some election observers in the room. Those are all ballots that still need to be counted. Good work on Gabby getting us that, to show you just how many ballots still need to come down. So we're watching this in Heartland, the drama of the school board race, where I believe the banner at the bottom is actually outdated, because according to what Jason has seen, it may be a five-vote difference there, although not officially, just from the numbers he has seen. We're also watching what's happening out in New Jersey with the NTSB, expecting to have a press conference, some of the media members. They are gathered. This is because of what happened in the Hudson River with the helicopter that crashed yesterday, killing everybody onboard. So we're waiting to see what will come out of this press conference. So keep following here on your Fox Local app. If you're watching us on Fox Local, for our friends on YouTube from around the world, thanks for joining us. Make sure you download the Fox Local app, because you can read more about all of the stories that are happening right now on your screen and that we have followed here in the last hour. So that's gonna do it for me, Ben Handelman. We'll see you on the news. Thanks for joining us for what has been a fun little time.